This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting has been provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star and Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and the bulletin board at Borough Hall two-two-one, South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey. It has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to the left and the right of council chambers. And Chief, can you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Let me introduce to the flag of the United States of America, men and women, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mayor Foster, Councilmember George, Councilmember Hale, Councilmember Hirsch, Council President Kim Cho Han, Councilmember Pistonik, Councilmember Vargas, or Attorney Renaud, or Administrator Hugger.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, work session meeting and May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five executive session meeting as distributed?
Motion. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Now we're going to move on to council reports. Councilmember George, would you like to start?
Yes, Council President, thank you. Just want to say first of all, tonight we have on the agenda a resolution to just repaint and freshen up the Black Lives Matter broadly marking in front of Borough Hall with the gathering of private and public groups. Just need some freshening up after years of where unwitizing. But it's a little difficult to sit here and not scream and howl about how that simple expression is now applying to a lot of us in America, that we all matter and our elected government is trying to paint so many of us out of existence and into subservience to whatever these autocratic wannabes decide looks good on them today. We originally painted Black Lives Matter on the road using DPW paint and some string and some cheap drills paint brushes from down the corner because of the controversies about police violence and devaluing human life. But here in Highland Park, just as a reminder, we have started after two thousand and five, when our own self-analysis said, we better work on this stuff. And prior to those murders, our department had already set itself on a new course, set itself aside from all this. We were community police long before it was a social need. We had new management working under a mentor we hired to revise, revitalize, renew, and reorient us, the department, the council, the administration, and the town. Today Highland Park Police Department is an example for other departments about how a small department situated between two large towns can create an atmosphere of inclusion, care, and caution for all of our residents. In the police department, here's a blue envelope. This is a new program being implemented in New Jersey. We noticed in law enforcement, municipal prosecutors, the Attorney General's Office, that there were problems with drivers on the autism spectrum involved in even minor traffic issues because of differences of perception and behavior and lack of training on officers in some cases as to how to react to that. The Blue Envelope Program, a driver on the autism schedule can put their driver's identification, registration, insurance, any other documents they want into the blue envelope carried in the car. If there is a stop, speeding ticket, parking ticket, whatever it may be, when that driver presents the blue envelope, the officer knows to engage in a different kind of conversation and a different kind of stop. Our officers, all officers are being trained through the Attorney General's Office and the county prosecutors in how to go about those interactions. They're not always easy, but with the ability to have the officers immediately know that there's an issue, those controversies hopefully will be done away with. Both the drivers and the police can be treated appropriately in the particular stop. So I think it's a great program. I'm looking forward to moving. It's being implemented, our officers are being trained. As everybody knows, the bicycle rodeo last week unfortunately was rained out, and we have rescheduled it for May thirtieth, same time for thirty to six, same place at Barlow School. We still have the same participants. Keep Middlesex moving, safe walking and cycling in the police department. Again, there's still the games, bicycle safety checks, a bicycle mechanic there to give advice, helmet giveaways. It's always a good program. It's been growing over since we started to reinstate it after the pandemic. And invite everybody to be there as well, even adults coming in a little bit. And for youth, there'll be helmet giveaways as well. On June third, look at the meeting, we'll be swearing in our two new officers with the drive-in training for community-based leasing and look forward to that event. With regard to the fire department, the department is getting ready for Memorial Day. It's always sort of a commemoration along with the opening house. Today the firefighters, I stopped by and I'm not sure that they're doing what they said, but they're planting the flowers around the memorial. So they are spusing up the headquarters for the commemoration and opening house. Again, the Memorial Day ceremonies are here on Memorial Day, starting around eight-thirty to honor the fallen, including our own firefighters and to honor our own safety workers. And it's not usually followed by many residents, but it is a quiet memorial focused on our town and everyone is invited to come and honor our public safety numbers and first aid fire police. During April, there were forty-two fire responses, which is more than one a day. With our full-time staffing being managed by the Chief and Chief Abrams, as director, there were no issues with any responses by the fire department and shows that the administration's management, just by adding the part timers to fill in without crazy overtime, is working. At the library, the Board of Trustees met last night, went through a number of new programs that are coming or that are restarting. The films in the media room are restarting and unfortunately they all fall on schedules when most of us have to attend boards or commission meetings. But they're in the new media room, they're starting up. On June twenty-fourth, the science heroes will be at the library at two P M. It's a great program, very interactive. They travel around to libraries and they, using a little bit of comic, a little bit of acting, a little bit of scenarios. They get children and adults both interested in the ways of learning about science, learning through science as to methodologies of looking at things. I understand that they've been very well received at some of the other places they play at. I'm looking, I'm frankly looking forward to going and seeing them. That's all I have, Madam Council President.
Thank you. Councilmember Pistonik.
Thank you, Council President slash Acting Mayor for tonight. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Pistonik. I'm the Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee for the council. And within that wonderful world, I had a couple of updates I wanted to share all related to Human Relations Commission. So first off, I wanted to highlight that the Human Relations Commission's annual flag raising events are just around the corner. So if you haven't already, you'll want to mark your calendars with all of these. On Wednesday, June fourth, we'll be holding the Caribbean American Heritage Flag Raising Event from six P M. to six forty-five. On Wednesday, June eleventh, there'll be the Pride Month Flag Raising from six P M. to six forty-five again. And then Thursday, June nineteenth, there'll be the Juneteenth Flag Raising Event from five P M. to five forty-five. All of those will be happening just outside of the community center. So I hope to see you there. Sticking with the Human Relations Commission, I want to highlight a couple of related items that are on today's agenda. Well, first, Phil already spoke beautifully to it. There's the resolution of support for the restoration of the Black Lives Matter mural in town. The mural is approaching, five years in the age, it's been converted and more and it's still noted. And whereas we all, I think, remain committed to the principles underlying that message, I would just ask my council colleagues to support its restoration, another wonderful project of the Human Relations Commission. And also on the agenda is the appointment of Rui Gao to the Human Relations Commission. I'll just have him pronounce his name, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting her just yet, but I do know that she's ready, working with the chairs of the commission to get fully up and running. And how about all of the events that the commission has lined up? So I'd encourage my council colleagues to support this nomination as well. And lastly, for anyone out there in the public who may be interested in joining the Human Relations Commission and working on events and programs that help bring our community together, I encourage you to submit volunteer application. The application can be accessed on the Borough website at hpborough.com. And submit to our wonderful nearest local clerk, Jennifer Santiago. I know a number of votes have expressed interest and are starting the application process, but there still should be a few vacancies available, so please check it out if you're interested. That is my report for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Hirsch.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee. Just wanted to point to a few things briefly. A reminder that bulk pickup is underway and by appointment only. Bulk waste collection will be by appointment and pickups can be scheduled on Tuesdays through the remainder of May and in June, as well as September and October. To make an appointment, please call Public Works at seven-three-two-two-four-seven-ninety-three-seventy-nine during reasonable hours. Excuse me, I'm sorry, that's six thirty. Each household may request up to two collections a year. And just a side note, so I'll since you're the one here. Bulk, the week after the townwide garage sale, Tuesday, September seventeenth and Thursday, September nineteenth, there will be a bulk pickup scheduled townwide. You do not need to make an appointment. And just a note, recycling will not be collected during the week of September sixteenth to September twentieth. Materials may be placed at the curbside no sooner than one hour before sundown of the day prior to the scheduled pickup. Materials not properly secured, bundled, and unacceptable items, please see the list at www.hpborough.com. And materials put out for collection without a scheduled appointment or on the wrong date also will not be collected. And why does that sound so strict? Well, because this time of year, there is often a lot of material that's left out on the curb for pickup. We see this routinely with, you know, particularly as leases, you know, tenant leases come up in June and people move. And we see a lot of folks just, you know, kind of discarding their items on the curb. Fortunately, in Highland Park, you know, there is a market for that. A lot of folks, you know, it's often advertised on social media and folks will come and reuse the good, these materials. And more on that later through Sustainable Highland Park. However, though, if things lie out there too long, it can be hazardous. They can shift. Obviously, there are real reasons why it's important to keep your bulk collection in a safe, secure place before, until before the day of the pickup. Just on that, just a quick run through of our monthly report on sanitation and recycling. Thank you to Frank Troy from DPW for providing these data. We've had three hundred and eleven tons collected, trash collected on eight collection days and delivered to Middlesex County landfill this month. And the year-to-date is one thousand two hundred and twenty-three tons of trash collection. With recycling, excuse me, we've, in this month alone, we collected ninety-three times over nine collection days, delivered to Colgate Paperstock Company in Brunswick. And the year-to-date is three hundred and twenty-six point two-nine tons. Just a note, I say this every time, but if anybody out there is interested in coordinating to take a trip to the Colgate Paperstock Company, it is fascinating. You can see that these materials are actually recycled. There does seem to be a myth out there that recycling materials are not recycled. They are, and they're sorted through, and it's a really, really interesting process. So our environmental commission can arrange for a tour. And so please reach out if you are interested. Speaking of the Environmental Commission, they will meet tomorrow, they'll meet on June, sorry, they'll meet on June fourth, Wednesday, June fourth, at eight P M. on Zoom. Go to www.hpborough.com for the link. And just a note on the Environmental Commission, we are appointing Josephine O'Brady tonight to the Environmental Commission. I was able to meet her at the Park Partners voting. So congratulations to Josephine and thank you for stepping up. Sustainable Highland Park will meet next Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, at seven-thirty P M. In person here at Borough Hall at the downstairs conference room. You can enter from the south sixth side downstairs. This will likely, this will be a hybrid meeting, but the meeting will be in person. So we look forward to seeing folks there. And just some upcoming programming through Sustainable Highland Park. June seventh, mark your calendars, it's the Spring Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Clean and Green Weekend. So join us for a weekend of native plant giveaways, a neighborhood cleanup, and a tour of the Meadows Trail by Donaldson Park. Please note that there are different events on Saturday and Sunday. On June seventh, the times are nine A M. to one P M. at Malamud Grove Park. And then also that morning, also at nine A M., related, but a separate activity, we're going to come together for a cleanup our community. Gloves, buckets, and other supplies will be provided. And again, this event is part of the Spring Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Clean and Green Weekend. Please come. Just a nod to the shade tree advisory committee. You know, we work hard in between meetings, making sure that our tree maintenance program is efficient and underway. You might have seen that the borough recently planted about a hundred trees, new trees around town. And of course, they need to be maintained in these critical early years. So, and just a few notes on this. So you know, if you're interested in having, if you have a, if you have a, if your street, if your portion of the street is missing a tree or if there's a gap, you can request a tree. And I highly recommend you do so because planting trees and improving our tree canopy is particularly important, especially now as, you know, we have a lot of neighborhoods that are roughly the same age. You know, Highland Park was established in nineteen oh five. There's some older homes and younger homes than that. But a lot of homes, you know, are, you know, were built at a time when trees were planted about a hundred years ago, eighty years ago. You know, if we look in the forties and fifties, then we're looking at seventy or eighty years. And a lot of these trees are aging out. So you may have seen that, you know, some of the trees, you know, if they start to look aged, well, that's because it's time to develop a new generation of trees, and that is what is happening. So please, if you go to www.hpborough.com, you can learn more about our tree planting program. And you can also request a tree for the next time we do a planting. So why? They help conserve energy by blocking winter winds and shading the summer sun. Trees reduce noise, I feel like Joyce Kilmer up here. They reduce noise pollution by absorbing sounds. Trees filter and cleanse our water. On average, trees add from five to six percent to the value of your home. A large shade tree can produce enough oxygen for ten people each year. And this is really important too, particularly in built-out urbanized communities like Highland Park. Trees make the borough cooler by reducing the urban heat island effect. They control soil erosion. We are on high land, we have hills, there is erosion. They enhance the appearance of our streets unquestionable. They clean the air by absorbing carbon dioxide, dioxide and harmful pollutants. So please, if you have a missing tree, go ahead and request a planting. It is very exciting and, you know, you really have ownership over that and you feel that you have, you know, some agency and a part in the environmental stewardship of that park. Thank you to our volunteers who cleared eighteen and a half pounds of litter from Raritan Avenue, North Third, and five rain gardens on South Third, Fourth, and Fifth. This is part of Sustainable Highland Park's regular cleanup. You can go to www.sustainablehighlandpark.org to learn more about Sustainable Highland Park and upcoming program. And also, thanks to a grant that the borough received, you can also check out their new website, which is incredible. Congratulations to Sustainable, we're seeing this through. And that is my report, Council President, thank you.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Matt Hale, and I chair the Economic Development Committee. Couple things. So this Thursday from three to seven P M. and Friday from eleven to five P M. is downtown planting day. So the big planters that are on Main Street, it's where we get a bunch of volunteers coming out to help plant stuff for the summer season. So you are available if you have some time. There's always a need for volunteers to get out and help with the planting. So you can go to mainstreet.org or you can just head to Main Street on either Thursday or Friday and say, I want to plant, and they will help. We also kicked off outdoor movie night this week with the Muppet Movie, which was a huge success. If you take a look at the listing of events for the outdoor movie night, it looks like there is a little bit of a David Lynch Film Festival going on. So the movie Blue Velvet is on July nineteenth. Vol and Drive is on August sixteenth. And there is a Twin Peaks double feature on September twenty-seventh. All events start at nine P M. And so come on out and take a look at those. There are also others for children. So I see Jason going, where are my kids going to go? There are plenty of those that are our age appropriate. But it's a great event, it's a great place to come out and take a look at some outdoor activities. Also, we have a project that is funded through a variety of sources, but also neighborhood participation program, working on creating new banners to go up, all up and down Raritan. So it's a process by which we are taking comments. And I wanted to thank Councilmember Hirsch and Vargas for their comments on previous designs. But I really also wanted to thank the sort of lead designer from Main Street Highland Park Committee, Yee Zeh Fink, who is working on coming up with some great new designs for, from new banners. And then lastly, this summer, we are starting a local business social media project. The basic idea is that we're going to try and do little short videos of Highland Park businesses and then post those videos all over various social media channels. It's just an opportunity to sort of highlight quickly and shortly some of the things that are going on in Highland Park. If you are a local business and interested in being in one of these, or if you have a favorite local business and would like to star in one of these, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, mattm hail@hpborough.com, and we'll take it from there. So lots of fun stuff coming up for the summer, and that's my report.
Great. Councilmember Vargas.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Norma Elise Vargas, and I chair the Arts and Recreation Portfolio. I'd like to begin with a reminder that the Memorial Day Parade is coming up this Monday, May twenty-sixth. The parade will begin at ten-thirty A M. at Civic Square in New Brunswick and will make its way through Highland Park along Raritan Avenue with ceremonies taking place at the Doral Memorial. We anticipate reaching Highland Park around eleven-thirty. We encourage everyone in the community to come out and join us as we honor the brave women who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our country. The Highland Park Arts Commission continues its exciting work with another sculptment of Learn and Create Workshop Series, which will take place on May twenty-seventh at the Highland Park Library, starting at seven. Its upcoming workshop focuses on beginner jewelry making. I'm happy to share that it's already at capacity with twenty-five registrations. The original maximum was eighteen, but due to the high demand, they were able to expand the class. There's going to be a consideration for offering the workshop again in the fall, which is very useful for those who didn't get to register this time around. Also, a huge congratulations to the Arts Commission for being awarded the Park Partners Grant, which we just announced today. This grant will support a new initiative called the Free Little Art Gallery, which will bring many art galleries to different parts of the borough. The first installation is planned for the Environmental Central River Road, which is now the home to the Raisers Cultural Center. We're looking forward to seeing these little galleries pop up and bring creativity to unexpected places. Stay tuned for news of when the first installation will take place. The Commission also cosponsored Protest, which took place this past Sunday, and I had the honor of hosting five bands on our porch, each representing a unique music genre. It was a joyful day filled with music, dancing, and community spirit. A huge thank you to Gary Kaplan and Sue Winkler for their outstanding coordination and planning the registration to promoting the event. Everything ran smoothly, at least from our end. I'm sure it was not an easy task, but our family really loved being part of it, and we're already looking forward to hosting again next year. So see you from the nation on that, and that is my quick and short report, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, my turn. The mayor is currently attending the New Jersey Conference of Mayors Sixtieth Annual Spring Conference in Atlantic City, and she couldn't attend tonight's meeting. So my name is Stephanie Kim Cho Han, and I'm Council President and the Chair of Finance. A quick, just a quick few announcements. The Rent Control Board will not be holding its monthly meeting on Thursday. We look forward to seeing you next month. We still have an opening for a part-time tax assessor clerk. If you are interested, please apply on our borough's website. Last night, I joined Governor Murphy and many other AAPI elected officials to celebrate Asian-American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. In two thousand and twenty-three, New Jersey had approximately nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand AAPI residents, with Middlesex County having the largest population and share within the state. So thank you to all, my neighbors and the surrounding counties for your contributions. Lastly, enjoy the unofficial start of summer, this three, this upcoming three-day weekend. While the weather may not affect this season change yet, we hope that you will join us for the Memorial Day Parade on Monday. All right, Borough Administrator Report.
Thank you, Council President. I do have a couple items I'd like to mention. The first couple relate to agenda items. I just thought I'd just point out item twelve A on the agenda, an authorization to go out to bid to solicit proposals for leasing one-one-five Raritan Avenue, which the borough has acquired as part of our tract day redevelopment. We were approached by two separate entities with an interest in utilizing the garage space for operating and maintaining their own fleets. And it struck us that there might be an interest. So the proper procedure, if we were going with a for-profit entity, is to get this authorization from council, we'll issue a bid and see what comes in. So I just wanted to explain what that item was. If we find a suitable tenant, it'll be back to council for a vote as to whether or not to authorize that lease agreement. So that's what that item is, because it was the first one for me, so I thought I'd mention it. I also just thought I'd point out, I had requested an executive session to discuss JSM versus Highland Park litigation. We are not going to hold that meeting tonight. We just don't have enough to report to keep you this evening. So I ask that you consider table and not for this evening. And I thought you mentioned the start of summer unofficially. Our code enforcement office has reported quite a number of phone calls from residents regarding grass height. And there was a post on Facebook from the borough kind of reminding folks, we do have property maintenance regulations. We are not extremely rigid about enforcing them. However, we do suggest folks keep their tabs on those. And right now, it's my understanding that the code is four inches to grass height. But in general, we all know how it is, lots of rain means lots of growth. And I would also remind folks, probably more importantly, shrubs that are in the right-of-way, particularly sidewalks and at corners, do tend to bust forward at this time of year. And property owners that have those corners and those key areas where they have shrubs in those right-of-ways, we also ask that you please keep those under control so that people can walk by. So again, just a gentle reminder, kind of time to step up on the property maintenance and, you know, keep an eye out for your neighbors if they're having any difficulty with their maintenance. Maybe you can give them a hand. Thanks.
Great. Borough Attorney's Report.
Thank you. So just as a reminder for the public and for those at home, during the council meetings, there are several opportunities for members of the public to speak and express their opinions. They are at number ten, which is the public participation. You'll be awarded three minutes, that is to speak to any item on the agenda, so that's your resolutions, your So that's your resolutions, your ordinances on first readings, appointments, so on and so forth. At number fifteen, you'll see a second public participation, that is three minutes, where members are allowed to speak on any item not on the agenda, anything they want to bring forward to council. And the third opportunity is on ordinances on second reading, which there is one tonight. The public will be given an opportunity to speak on that ordinance specifically. The during that that speaking session, it's it's not a back and forth. You are welcome to ask the council any questions. You're welcome to make any comments. The council is not going to engage in a back and forth and answer those questions during your time. And specifically, that is done to allow for every member to have ample opportunity to speak before the council makes any kind of a comment back. Thank you very much.
Public participation, twenty-one minutes total, three minutes per speaker, limited to items on this agenda. Comments from members of the public attending the meeting in person will be heard first, followed by members of the public attending the meeting via Zoom.
Hi, we have three members of the public on Zoom, but no hands up.
Seeing no one, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kent Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes. Ordinance requiring a second read in. Clerk, please report ordinance number two one dash two one one four.
And one minute's entitled bond ordinance providing for various water and sewer improvements appropriating one million five hundred thousand, therefore, from the Water and Sewer Utility and authorizing the issuance of one million five hundred in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage. On final reading by title, the affidavits of publication are on file. Ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection.
A public hearing. It is now time for a public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak on this ordinance, please come to the microphone or raise your hand on Zoom.
No hands up on Zoom.
Okay, seeing no one, may I have a motion to to close public hearing or ordinance number two five dash two one one four?
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kent Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve ordinance two five dash two one one four?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kent Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
And consent agenda items, resolutions. Councilmembers, would we like any of the following consent agenda items pulled from the consent for a separate vote?
Now that I.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the following consent agenda items, thirteen A through thirteen J?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve A through twelve.
Sorry.
Okay, through twelve.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Kent Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Resolutions requiring a separate reading. Five dash two five dash one five two, chapter eighty-five. Resolution to request a change in title, text, or amount of appropriation. May I have a motion to to adopt five dash two five dash one five two, chapter eighty-five, resolution to request a change in title, text, or amount of appropriation?
So moved. Second.
Have roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kent Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Now, appointments, Human Relations Commission, will we call Environmental Commission, Josephine O'Grady, no competition needed, but welcome aboard. Second, public participation, three minutes per speaker on any topic subject to nine P M conclusion. Comments from members of the public attending the meeting in person will be heard first, followed by members of the public attending the meeting via Zoom.
All right, see no hands up on Zoom.
Right, seeing no one, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved. Second.
A roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kent Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Great. Next, we have item seventeen A, resolution five dash two five dash five three, executive session, litigation, J S M versus Borough of Highland Park. As Business Administrator Hope Fair had mentioned, that any additional additional time is needed. And I would like to ask council for a motion to pull this resolution.
And so moved. Second.
Okay. May I have a, okay, that was the motion. Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Thank Kent Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
All right. Motion, may I have a motion to adjourn? And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Congratulations on the record for the shortest meeting.
Well done.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Next meeting schedule will be June thirty.